Good evening.
Buongiorno. Hello?
Hi, Scott.
How are you?
Can't complain. How are you?
Almost awesome.
All right, wow, for you.
Thank you.
All right.
Almost awesome.
Is calling user three Gary, is that you?
I can't tell.
It is.
I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you, so that's you. All right, you're muted, so we, I think, have everybody in attendance. All right, we will call the Order to Finance Committee. Tonight, we will be covering golf, water, sewer, general services, and the capital fund, or capital budget, excuse me. We will start first with the golf budget, golf fund, I should say. That's towards the end of your budget packet, and that would be with Mr. Daly.
Hey, do you mind if I just give you a quick overview, Matt?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that the golf, the golf fund itself, it's up 2.8%, which is only amounts to $33,607. But the increase is mostly from the increase of the transfer of golf funds to the general fund. Has been cut within the golf fund, just that the total, the total fund is up only because we increased the transfer to the general fund from 114 to 51, a $37 increase. I just wanted to let you know that that's why there is an increase.
All right, so everybody should be able to see the screen. Go ahead, Mr. Daly.
Yeah, so this year, obviously, as everybody's, all departments are telling you the same thing. It's been a pretty trying year, thin staffed, as I'm sure all departments are, and we've been grinding it out up here. We've had an interesting, I shouldn't even say it's been interesting, we've had just a series of events up here that have just been most unfortunate. We had a death on the golf course, we had a terrible storm last week. You know, on top of all the COVID stuff that's been going on, and somehow still, there's a chance that we could hit or exceed all of our budget numbers, despite the fact that we lost revenue for just about the entire month of April and a good chunk of May. In terms of the golf industry itself, nationally, I believe the golf industry is up by 25%, which is saying something, because that means that because of the safe social distancing aspect of the sport, and with everything that's been going on, things are being shut down, or just people are unsure about going inside to do things, they're spending a lot of time outdoors, and golf is being one of the activities that they're doing, and we're starting to reap the rewards from that, as a lot of golf courses are. I've been hearing the same thing locally from every golf course, that they're just, their T-sheets are full. So it's been, golf is up, food and beverage has been down. I will say, though, at this facility, that the food and beverage end of things have done a remarkable job to keep their heads above water. And June and Dave should be commended for their efforts, as well as my entire staff, because I've been, they've been, had a lot asked of them this year, and they've just been, they've gone above and beyond, so it's been a total team effort up here. But I wouldn't be lying if I didn't tell you, if I said we weren't tired. So having said all that, I guess when you look through the budget, I mean, if you have some questions or anything glaring that you would like to address, feel free to just shout it out at me, we'll go over it.
So why don't we hold on a second? I thought, I thought Mr. Mootivaren was on the call, I thought I saw his name, but apparently he's not. He's having some difficulty getting in, so we're gonna, that's a good time to, to hold on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, can you switch the screens back? I don't know if you're making those changes on us or not. I no longer see your white screen.
No, I had to give Sam hosting ability, so she could let John in, so we'll put off screen, as soon as she's done, we'll put the screen back on.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I just make a general comment?
Sure.
I don't know if people have had the opportunity to look through the data summary that Heather has put together. The most recent one, if you look there for the golf course, there's fairly significant breakdown in terms of when the revenue comes in, who's generating it by category. The analytics are what I consider, at this point, the best in the city. And the golf course, in many respects, is a lot more simple than other departments, but would like to, as we go forward, we're trying to develop this to be able to tell the story of what departments are doing and the activity within them by the numbers. And when you look at that, it gives you a pretty good overview of what happens when, and it's just an example, trying to work that through the city as a whole. And if you haven't seen that, take the time to review it, and then look at some of the other information that's in it, that Heather's put together, and just we're looking to expand that as we go forward.
We're just waiting on Mr. Mootivaren. Hopefully, the tech issues get worked out. I see him, so hopefully that's good news. John, are you there?
Sorry about that, I finally am.
That's all right. Sorry about that, I thought, I thought I saw your name before. So let me share the screen. There you go. Screen's back up. Go ahead, Mr. Daly.
Yeah, so as, as I was kind of touching on earlier, really good job by the entire staff here on all ends, Mike Sezny, he's done a tremendous job. One, one thing should be noted, too, when, when we were, when we briefly opened at the end of March, I think it was about three or four days, and then we immediately got shut down by the state, as every place did, really. But on the grounds crew, we are still able to do some, some maintenance on the crew, and I remember assisting Mr. Sezny on the grounds crew to help him out with a few things, and I'll tell you, all the work that was done in that time really has paid off, because I gotta say, I've been at this facility for quite some time, even as an assistant during the Bob Haggerty years, I can't remember seeing the course in the condition that it's in right now, as good, as good a condition as it is right now. And the feedback has been just remarkable in terms of that, and I sincerely think that this trend is going to continue into next year.
Hey, John, just one question on this page.
Go ahead.
The interest earnings, the 2401A, went from 12,000 to only 1,000, or Mr. Ferrari, can you explain that or elaborate on that, please?
Yes, the interest rate went from 2% last year, we're down to .013, so we're at less than 10% of a percent.
Guess we better hide it under a mattress, get more interest on that.
All right, anything else, Mr. Daly?
No, I'm, I'm open up for any questions that you might have.
All right, are there any questions?
Mr. Mootivaren, or Mr. Palmini?
Go ahead.
I just want to commend Mr. Daly. I've heard great feedback from the course in general, and you know, your staff does a phenomenal job, as do you, and you know, kudos to you for, you know, operating in such trying times, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Daly, on the adopted, can you, first of all, can, can you give me the year-to-date, Anthony, if you have that, the year-to-date, right now, for the golf course fees that have been taken in? Would you know that?
Yeah, we're actually over a million.
Oh, okay. Okay, I missed some of that, what was that number?
We actually went over the million-dollar mark last week, I think we're at a million 28,000 right now.
Okay, okay, I, well, my concern was whether we had hit our mark, so that answers the question.
Are there any other questions?
Last week, I asked the most updated budget for the course, you guys receiving it?
Yes, I did, I just don't have it right here in front of me.
All right, just want to make sure that you provide.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daly.
Thank you very much, buddy.
We will move on to the water fund. Believe that would be Mr. Lafon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Give you an overview on the water fund?
Go ahead, Anthony.
As you can see, the water fund is up by 3.1%, that's 275,947 compared to 2020, but that, there's been budget cuts, but the reason why it went up is the increase of, increase of interfund transfer from the water fund to the general fund. As I mentioned yesterday, we increased it again by this year to, by $350,000, so that's, that is the main reason for the increase of the budget. Go ahead, Paul.
The water fund is pretty much unchanged from last year, like Anthony said, there is no increase, this is going into the fourth year of no increase in, in rates in the water structure for both metering and flat rate services. There's really not a lot, if you go through line by line, there's minimal change throughout this budget. The, it was in benefits, health insurance, and like Anthony said, with regards to the transfer to the general fund, so that is what increased the overall budget in the water fund slightly, but it's pretty much a, you know, like all budgets this year, we've got a tough year, these are tough budgets, these are, you know, these are accurate budgets, there's no, no fluffing these budgets, including the water, the water budget. So if you've got specific questions on a line item, like this is pretty much unchanged from last year, other than those slight changes that Anthony and I just mentioned.
I, I just want to, I want to add on that one page you're looking at, under commercial water accounts, the street facilities inspector, that should be a .5, because he's in for a half a year, yes, the worst, zero should be a .5.
The FX 8311100?
That is correct, under senior street inspector, that's what should be .5.
It is .5.
It is, it shows that 00 here, yeah.
And the one question that was submitted is due to that line, what is the impact with reducing to half-time this position?
There, there will be no impact, this is the position we wanted to, the, it will be taken over by codes, it'll be absorbed by codes. And there are inspections on properties, it's pretty much the paving aspect of things and sidewalks, so it is going to be absorbed by codes. He has no, he cannot write violations, that position in the engineering department cannot write violations, so it's just not efficient to send a senior street facility inspector out for a violation to check a paving job on a, you know, on a driveway, when in turn he has to transfer that and call codes, he'll call Chris Fun, and they in turn send a code enforcement officer out. It's just not a good use of manpower. So this position, this employee was looking at retiring, so that's why the, you know, half a year is in there, after the half year, it will be absorbed by codes, and during the first six months of the year, he'll work with codes to train them on the permits and what he takes in. The permit fee won't change, somebody's going to come in for a permit, and they're going to come to somebody either way, whether they go upstairs to engineering, or they go downstairs to codes, or they come to room nine, we're still going to get the fees for the, the permit. But it just makes us a more efficient operation where we're not sending, you know, a duplicate department over there to do what one person could have did the first time around.
All right, any other questions? All right, we will move on to the sewer fund, just a little bit below.
And once again, let me just start by saying, the sewer fund, it went up by 2.2%, you know, but the total amount was 290,826 from 2020. Again, this is mostly because of the $350,000 increase to transfer from the sewer fund to general. Go ahead, Paul.
And again, you know, it's pretty much unchanged, other than now its transfers, there is nothing, you know, that is a big change in this budget line by line. Again, it comes down to some of the contractual obligations with benefits or increases, slight increases with regards to contractual obligations. But again, this is going in the fourth year where the water and sewer have not seen a rate increase. You know, I think we have a, a great water You know, I think we have a great water and sewer department. We have a great crew out there. You know, for a minimum amount of staff that we have, they're very reactive when there's an emergency. And I, you know, I give them kudos for what they do for us.
I would agree. You've got the best water and sewer guys in the country, in my estimation. Not only that, they've been helping out with some of the cleanup, so please send along our things.
And they call in to collect garbage and other things. So, you know, we have some, some very good employees.
Are there any questions? All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is code enforcement, which is page 51 in your books. And it is line A8664.
I mean, before Chris line, Chris, give me a minute. The total code enforcement budget is compared to 2020 is down by 27%.
Thanks, Anthony. Yeah, you know, we were looking at some cuts here, and I think it was a surprise to everyone. But, you know, the more I look at it, it's actually flattering to see that I'm such a strong manager in the city that can actually pull this off. So there is quite a few cuts. And, you know, we've been ramping up code enforcement over the past few years, and we've had some great success. But with that, you know, unfortunately, we've come into a time that is unknown. I would like to thank the mayor and Anthony and the commissioner for all the PPE that my staff received this year and the great job that they did guiding us through the COVID. We had a lot of unknown sending code officers into inspect buildings that were, we didn't know what this pandemic was all about at first. So they made it through. Here we are. If you guys have any questions, if I can answer anything, please let me know.
All right, are there any questions?
Mr. Palmini?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Lon. Lon, if the council were to approve this proposed budget as is, what impact this would have on your department, including the services being provided, performed now? And we have time to get an appointment for the many inspection.
That's a great question. So we'd be going, we'd be losing two officers in this and also an administrative staff. Wait times are obviously going to go up. I still have to evaluate, you know, the exact wait times that are going to be pressed forward. My first, and always my first thing to take was all in the city. That's going to take precedence. So there may be some services that we'll get to, but it's going to take a little longer. I don't know what that's times are exactly going to be. But it's probably an extra 20% workload per officer.
Is there any other questions?
Mr. Palmini, please.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Lon, of these 12 positions, we have, are all 12 filled at the moment or not?
Thank you, Mr. Koser. No, currently we have three vacant positions. Those have been vacant since November of last year. We were unable to fill them in December. There was no unacceptable candidates in December. We currently have 10 officers. We have the supervisor position is filled and the clerical aide, or code enforcement clerk is filled. So we would, we would be losing two officers, a supervisor or the building assistant, I'm sorry, and code enforcement clerk.
So you'd be losing two officers or three? Or actually, you'd be losing one, correct? Via layoff, is that the way?
We're going to have to lay off two officers in this scenario.
Is that including the supervisor then?
No, plus, plus the building inspector assistant.
Okay, so we'd be down. Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Palmini, I have a question. So in terms of the folks that are laid off or let go, is that based on seniority than the amount of time they have with the city?
So could we currently have some provisional people that have not passed the civil service exam? So those with the provisional people would be going first. And without speaking out of line, I believe that that would be the last one in, be the first one out. So the least amount of time spent here, it would be, would be gone first.
First provisional and then the least amount of time, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
All right, and one other question regarding line A8664115 standby pay? What staff member is that for? What staff position? I don't want to name. What staff position is that for?
That, that was for, I believe, actually, the building assistant would be taking that day. And he would no longer be, that's probably not going to be used.
Okay.
It would be used if Chris or assigned stand by, then it would be, he has one of his guys.
To raise somebody up, Anthony, yeah.
Well, that's a razor bite. If you need somebody to stand by over the weekend, get to stand by.
Okay.
Is there anything further? All right, thank you, Mr. Lon.
Thank you.
Palmini, I have one more question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lon, in-service training proposals for next year, 17,000. How was your utilization 2020 on that line? And what is your plan to use with this?
First, at minimum, to train officers and get them certified each year. So it would be myself, eight officers, and I also have my electrical inspector cross-trained to be code enforcement. So there'd be 10 of us using that money. There's 10,000. The other 7,000, I would hope to use for additional training courses throughout the year. If you, everyone remembers, I did put in last year's budget for 40,000 extra dollars in training. And I had stated to the council that this would be something that I'd be looking to go forward with, because training is very important to this department. Unfortunately, you know, we've had incidents this year. We didn't get in as much training. Everybody's certified and got their minimal amount of training. However, we did not go above and beyond. There was a lot, a lot of training facilities open this year. So that line maybe, I don't think I would reduce it any, just in case we were able to find money to bring officers back. You know, we'd want the extra training money, so when the other three officers came back, and it would leave us maybe a difference of 4,000 in the 2021 budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will be going to engineering and I'll give Mr. Wallen the post these here in a minute. Just want to get to the page. It's page 12 and 13 in your, I believe it's 12 and 13 in your budget. And start here and find Mr. Wallen. There you go. Let's see. You should have hosting or capability to put your presentation.
I don't know. Hold on one second. I got it right here. And then if I click and do this. Can you see this?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so this is going to be kind of quick and brief. I put one together before. I didn't know what the process is going to be. So this is a budget. Now, your notice on here, it says engineering and facilities. For all intensive purposes, A1440, A1441, and A1622 are all under the city engineer who was then by, under Paul. So I kind of have just a brief presentation where to go through, you know, here is the org chart. I keep an org chart together. I update it twice a year. This is how the Department of Engineering is currently constituted, with the city engineer, two assistants. The idea was to have the assistants split between one to deal with facilities and operations, and one to deal with capital projects and design. Then under that, you have a supervisor of buildings who's out of the A1622 facilities code. And under that supervisor of buildings, you have the facilities cleaners, janitorial staff that maintains city hall and the police station. On the other side of the ledger, if you see it in gray, gray was to produce more clarity whenever I'm talking about positions, because not everyone is paid out of the general fund, as you know. So we have the assistant civil engineer, who is out of the water fund, a junior civil engineer, which is currently open. And then the senior street facilities inspector, which you talked about previously with Paul's water budget. So I'll get into that just in a little bit, but that's the position where we're looking to phase out. There was a question on my questions about, you know, consultants and workload and how much we do. And what I wanted to just point out with this is that, once again, in an effort to try to provide clarity to everybody here internally, I have core responsibilities. Core responsibilities are, if, you know, we were to really pare down this budget and really pare everything down, and the city needed to go to, you know, basic survival mode, these are all the things that the Department of Engineering has to do. If you look at this list, what you will not see on here is capital projects, paving, you know, the actual spending of like, of actual money. These are the operational things. If the Department of Engineering does not do these core responsibilities, then the gears stop. Because this is where we have to work with all of our neighboring departments. So citizens request trackers, when people have complaints, we have to answer those. Claims against the city, it goes to law, then it comes to us. If we don't get back to law, then law is stuck. The community engagement, I mean, that's a no-brainer. We have to engage with communities. Facilities, the daily operations and the management of everything, all right? Making sure the facilities and the building is clean. Then you have foils, once again, through law to us, lot line adjustments, MS4 compliance. It's a huge thing. It's a state requirement. Then you get into this permit issuance and inspection, all these permits that we currently issue. But I'll get into that in a little bit, like we talked about previously with Paul. Then plan reviews, both plan reviews through Christine and plan reviews through the codes department. We assign addresses. We do SWIP reviews and inspections, street closures, and we assess our streets. So all of this is what these people are primarily focused on accomplishing. That's priority one. And then the capital projects and the things that everybody really likes to see, that's priority two. Because it really doesn't affect anybody outside. It does affect people, but these are our core responsibilities. So then moving into A1440, which I believe is page 12, the public works admin. There's only two positions in there, myself and an info processing specialist three. So we're not showing any staffing reductions. We're also showing that, you know, we have fees for service in here, and we have the maintenance contracts. So given everything that's going on, I've always appreciated if the fees for service and contract lines were larger, because they are money that's non-borrowed, non-capital money, operating fund money, that's more flexible and easier to work with. But, you know, I understand that we need to reduce things. The maintenance contracts, not everything can be paid for with bonded money. So about six years ago, five years ago, it was decided between myself and previous finance commissioner, Deputy Genova, to put in the budget, it was at the time $95,000. That's been pared down to $80,000. Now that's been pared down to $40,000. What I tried to do with that work is ceiling, brick repairs on J Street, anything that's smaller, that's really not a capital project. The fees for service, I mean, that comes in for anything. If we need lead testing, if we have asbestos issues, if we have just a need to have something reviewed, you know, we get a consultant or a third party to come and look at it. And those are things that, you know, in-house, we just can't do. To address one of the questions, it was about the IPS3. I mean, the IPS3 in this department, it's critical. You know, Anthony or Paul, they could both talk to support that position. The person that's in the position will not name names. I know that we don't want to do that. But she is essentially the lifeblood of the department. We have an inordinate amount of paperwork. You know, I can show you all of the paperwork here. So all this paperwork, it has bills, it has POs, it has invoices, it has foils. You can see on here how much I rely on Colleen to handle lawsuits, freedom of information. Oh, I have names. My apologies. I put names in here. And them to rely on that person to do some of this work. So I really feel like it would stop the department in its tracks if the position was eliminated. But once again, I mean, this is not my budget. It is your decision. But I just do want to say that I believe that, that it's a, it's a non-starter. I don't think anyone here is qualified to do what that person's doing at this time. And so that was, that was what I would say about, about that position. Going to A1441, which is the next page, page 13. We're looking to eliminate the vacant assistant to the city engineer position. We've advertised this position several times. We have not been able to find qualified candidates in the last, I would say, 18 months. We do have someone that started after, we had someone leave to go to the county. We did replace them, but then that created a vacant position for what we filled, and we have not been able to fill that position since. To kind of balance the load a little bit, we did increase slightly our fees for service line so that we could hire additional consultants and people to assist the department in lieu of losing that position. So with those two, 1440 and 1441, kind of my little spiel about it, I entertain any questions?
All right, are there any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wallen.
All right, I'd like to, I guess, you know what, we can stop right there. But John, it kind of is fluid if I can get to 1622, if you'd allow me.
Yeah, it's fine by me. Let me just roll down there.
Sure, it's page.
It's page 17.
Yeah, so going to 1622, which is facilities and buildings maintenance. On here, you may note a correction. We're calling it a correction. It is a correction. Anthony can speak to this. Of the salary for the supervisor of buildings. There was an adjustment made last year to balance a line item by finance, and that carried over into this budget, and it was missed. Well, the position was supposed to have been paid at 65, and the person was only been in that position for a year. But it was a surprise to the person that took the position that it was not the salary that they thought they were taking. So we're calling this a correction, not a raise, because this was the salary that the position was supposed to have been in the budget for originally. Additionally, there's an elimination of a vacant janitor position. This is a position that we put. This is a position that we put in, uh, as we were thinking of, uh, going a different direction. We never really posted for the position. And as you'll see, I don't want to jump ahead my line, uh, with the adjustments, but I do have a box on here that we are looking to do a proposed budget revision. And the revision is to, uh, eliminate the two existing janitor positions and create two new cleaner positions. We have two janitors. They're currently at the police department. And, uh, the issue with the janitors positions are that we would just, we feel that that position is, it's an antiquated position. It is a position that not, and we get more bang for the buck out of the cleaner positions where the job is a lesser position, but the job description is to just clean. And, uh, without getting into more details, Paul, I know your honor, Anthony, I didn't know if you wanted to jump in and just touch base on this?
No, I mean, we spoke about it earlier, Chris, you and I, and they can't perform because of other contractual obligations with other unions. So it's, uh, you know, I think the reduction or they're going from janitor to, um, cleaner, there's also a little bit of savings there, roughly about six thousand dollars, I think, too, also. Correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony.
Like six thousand seven hundred, but you're right, you're right on.
Mr. Palmini?
Go ahead.
So does that mean that the police station, um, is going to have cleaners and non-janitors? And then, okay. And are those people going to be having their, their, um, titles changed? Is that how that works? Or are we going to be hiring for new or are we just doing job adjustments?
Anthony?
I think, I think what we have to do is we're going to, uh, eliminate these positions and then, uh, they're going to have to reapply a- as the cleaners. You know, have to go through a new, they'll have to reapply as cleaners if they want to stay.